...but it's September 4th, so we can do the minutes, Bill.
All right, we're taking the meeting. Let's start with the minute of...
September 14th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for September 14th.
I wasn't here.
Why don't we table them until Damon gets in?
It says that you were here.
Says I was here before, which one was I?
I think on the 14th, Bill has to...
Bill was the only one that wasn't here.
Okay. The other meeting...
But you still can't.
Yeah, so we have to wait for Damon.
All right, so did you read them?
Yes. Yeah, I can write them down.
Okay. So on the 28th, John V. Anderson said... So what is the date?
I think that next, next agenda is at 7:15, the public hearing for the waivers with Fred.
For the bond reduction for Cook's Crossing, Jeff sent a new report.
Okay.
We had, there was a hundred thousand dollars in the bond. And Jeff said it would be okay to release 31,000, which would leave a balance of 69,000 in the bond.
Well, you have two, we have two separate ones, correct?
No, well, it's section one and section two.
Right, you gotta do them separately, Gail.
Okay, so section one...
You guys have that?
Um, I did, no, I don't...
I have it on my phone, I read it.
I don't have it.
Okay, section one is 20, he rounded it up to 20,000. Do you need the amounts on everything?
Uh, yes, we need to be, I didn't...
Okay, the right-of-way, he's doing 9,400. The site work, 1,300. Drainage is 13,45. And miscellaneous is 4,500. It brought it to 19,854, and he rounded it up to 20,000.
And that was for sections, stations, which to...
Amadon Road Station 0+00 to Station 8+00, and the entire length of Powder House Lane.
Okay, and what was Powder House Lane's numbers?
It just says entire length of Powder House Lane.
Oh, so, but you said there was 31,000, you've only described 20, I wanted on the record what the other 11,000 is.
It was like 20,000, you said 31,000, is there another section?
Oh, I said 31,000 was between the two sections, Bill, one and two.
Right.
Okay, so section two is Amadon Station 8+00 to 12+57 end, and Puffer Drive Station 0+00 to Station 9+75. And that would be, um, right-of-way was 10,300, site work was 7,200, drainage was 13,225, miscellaneous was 9,640, which brought it up to 40,365, but then he put a 20% contingency of 8,073, brought it to 48,438. He rounded it up to an even 49.
So the 49 and the 20 is the 69, and we're at $100,000. So just so everybody's aware, there's 69,000 left in roadwork to complete. Um, the bond is for 100,000 currently. So based on Jeff's report, we'd be able to reduce that by 31,000.
Right.
I need a motion.
Need the motion in different stations?
Yeah, just, you don't have to, you don't have to read the stations, just read the section of road.
Make a motion to reduce the bond for Amadon Road and length of Powder House Road, Powder House Lane for $20,000.
Second.
No, it's, uh, it's...
I'm doing, I'm doing two, two, two different ones, Bill.
That's section one, Bill.
That's section one.
All right.
So we have a second, John seconded.
John seconded.
James Quirk, aye.
John, aye.
Lambrizino, aye.
Make a motion to reduce the bond for Cook's Crossing, Amadon Road...
For section two.
Section two and Puffer Drive Station for a total of $49,000. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansel's aye.
Lambrizino, aye. All right, Bill, bring that man out of the rest, we still got about eight minutes.
Okay. Okay.
I'm at the meeting now, Bill.
Hey, Damon.
Okay, so we can do the, you want to get those two minutes over, please?
Yep.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for September 14th as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansel's aye.
Is that meeting yet, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Damon Tenney, aye.
Bill, Bill, you have to, um...
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't at that.
Bill, you have to abstain.
Yeah, he said it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
John Vansel's aye.
Damon Tenney, aye.
James Quirk, aye. Make a motion to accept the minutes for September 28th as written.
Second.
We have a second.
Yeah, Damon Tenney, aye.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
I wasn't here.
John...
John Vansel's abstained.
Okay. Okay, so we're all set with those, thank you.
We didn't do an all-in-favor, can you just show Damon whether or not he was...
What meeting was that, what minutes was that?
Uh, the 28th.
Where do we have?
I believe you have the paperwork there.
They're here, do you want to look at it?
No, I just want to see if my name's on it.
Oh, yeah, the 28th, he was here, present by conference.
Okay.
Yep.
Damon Tenney, aye.
All in favor?
Okay.
Lambrizino, aye.
Damon Tenney, aye, James Quirk, aye, good.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, we're good, thank you.
Damon, it's done.
This is just a submittal, right?
63 Providence?
No, 103, that's just a submittal.
Yes, yeah, he will be here.
Bob's not here yet, okay.
Yeah, he's not here yet.
He's, um, he's doing the submittal tonight, right, Gail?
He's supposed to be, yeah.
We could have got it done before the hearing, but he's not here to even do it, so, but it's just a submittal anyway.
Okay. I got another thing, Bill.
Yes.
Um, for zoning bylaws, we need a public hearing for typo corrections, and they want to incorporate recommended storm water management practices per Dan Byer. Dan is here?
Yes, um...
We need to get a, do a public hearing?
Uh, yes, why don't we schedule that public hearing date?
We can do it November 9th?
Dan, do you have prepared the changes for the storm water management?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have to walk up there, yeah, so this, I think Alan and Gabrielle from Tyne and Bond, they talked to you about this.
Yeah, we, we, we had a meeting on it, and, um, and I was fine with what they were looking to do, but they didn't have anything prepared as a final. I'd just like the remainder of the board to be able to see something written.
I have that, I volunteered to help Alan get it done, it's, it's really minimal.
Okay.
If you guys, you want this?
Yeah, if you want to just, like, see it.
If you don't have it tonight, that's fine, if you just email it to the board, Dan, so we could take a look.
Just take a look at it now, over here.
And Dan, could you email me a copy when we get a chance?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Need a motion for that?
Yes.
Need a motion to...
Yeah, because we have to set the public hearing.
Set a public hearing.
What date is that going to be, Gail?
11/9, November 9.
December 9th?
No, November 9th.
November 9th.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Basically, we're just correcting two sentences.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, we, I had talked with, um, Alan and, was it Gabrielle, I think, or? But yeah, no, that's, that's fine, it would, we had a lot of work done, uh, on that when Shirley and I did it, and so it's, um... We should be all set, so let's just set the date for 9th, 7:15?
Make a motion to...
Yes, okay.
Public hearing for zoning corrections, amendments 1.02 definitions for November 9th at 7:15.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansel's aye.
Damon Tenney, aye.
Lambrizino, aye. All right, um, I don't know if, three or something else?
You said one section of the bylaws?
Bill, I got a quick question for you, but we'll let, we'll let Dan finish.
In your motion, I think you need to include 4.04 as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I was doing different things.
It's, uh...
Section 1.02 and section 4.04, okay. All set, Dan? Yep?
Bill?
Yes.
This is, uh, we'll just change gears for a second till we get, till Bob's not here anyway, but, uh... Pond, uh, Pondview Estate or Park, whatever, down at the Cox Farm?
Yes.
Pond Meadow.
Pond Meadow, got a few things that I guess are, so there's some encroachment on the, from the wall into the town property.
On, um, this is all fine?
I just got, I got an email today for conservation.
Yep.
I'll, I'll email it to you when I get, when I get a second, just so you can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Just in case it's something that we have to deal with through planning board and conservation, I'd like to, yeah, at least we're both on board.
Yeah, absolutely, and, uh, if need, I should probably, if you think it's going to be something that requires that we can also read in town council.
I think, well, Patrice Murphy sent it over, so I guess her and Ann have been having some issues with it, but, well, and they may have already talked to town council, um, maybe with Met, I don't, it has to do with Metacom and land trust and everything, but I'll, I'll send it to you, just so you're on the same page.
Sounds good. All right, and Fred, why don't you get set up and...
Hey, I have one quick thing, Bill, that we weren't sure if it goes to the planning board.
Yeah.
I got a message from someone, they live at 231 Providence Street, their neighbor to the south of them in Blackstone, lives at 367 Blackstone Street, sold the house. During the survey, it was discovered part of their house is on their property.
Yes.
They want to know, they're in negotiations now and discussing a land swap. Is there any certain thing that they have to do?
Well, they're gonna have to do at least an A1P, but I believe both lots, and, you know, I mean, we only concerned with the Menden lot, but I believe it's a non...
So they have to do an A1P then?
Well, no, hold on a second, um, it, it may be a non-conforming lot, um... So they may have to get zoning board approval first for the non-conforming, which shouldn't be an issue, because there's a hardship there.
Well, their lot size is .5 acres.
Yeah, so they, for us to create a... Yeah, it's not grandfathered if they're gonna change it. They're moving lot lines, so it's, it's not grandfathered, so they'd have to go to ZBA to get relief, but it shouldn't be a problem, because they can easily prove hardship, um, you know, that for whatever reason, the lot wasn't engineered properly, it's been that way for forever.
Okay, all right, I will let her know then, okay.
I guess it all depends on whose house is where, because they might have to go to Blackstone zoning versus...
As well.
Versus Menden zoning, who's...
It's the Blackstone house.
Is on...
Blackstone Street, but they also live in Blackstone, and part of their house is on a Menden property.
Yeah, so...
Ouch.
That might become a Blackstone situation, right?
Yeah.
Or it's not too much, it's not much.
Yeah, because if the majority of the property is, is held within Blackstone, but Menden needs to also re, uh, if they're gonna provide land back to the owner and do a swap, for us to allow for an A1P on a non-conforming lot, ZBA has to provide relief.
Fred, stand there when you're ready.
I know it's a...
All right, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I know it's a difficult task, but, but you gotta remember, the A and R process is only for lots that need strict guideline. So we can't provide an A1P on something that's non-conforming without zoning relief.
Okay, so, Bill, are you opening up the public hearing?
Yeah, let's open the public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing for... Public hearing will be held on Monday, October 19th, 7:15 PM, the selectmen's board meeting at 20 Main Street to hear three waiver requests from Shea Engineering for Misco Springs subdivision, Locust Hill Drive, from the Menden rules and regulations for subdivision of land as revised on February 27, 2012. Property owned by Bruce Wheeler, Sylvan Springs Realty Trust, North Reading, Mass, property location is 9 Locust Hill Drive, 11 Locust Hill Drive, and 13 Locust Hill Drive, all right, Fred?
Uh, that's three, that's seven.
Oh, 14 Locust Hill, 15 Locust Hill, 12 Locust Hill, 10 Locust Hill, that all of them?
That's all.
Okay. All right, go ahead, go ahead.
My name is Fred Lappam, I'm with Shea Engineering, can you hear this?
Is it on? Bill? All right, so, Bill, you can hear Fred, right?
Yeah, I can hear Fred.
Okay.
All right, we're here to request three waivers for part of the road construction of Locust Hill Drive.
I've got four waivers, Fred.
Pardon me?
Oh, no, that's the list of, uh, right, uh, my bad, we gotta continue.
We have a, a section of road that goes from 11+50 Station, 11+50 to Station 20+0, that is, uh, probably the biggest challenge in this site. The challenge is really twofold, we have, uh, we have a lot of ledge through this section, and we have lots that, we have almost 100 feet difference in elevation on the construction area that we'll be working. So, in, just the way these things usually go, is Habitat, when they, when they open up lots and they, they go for lot releases, they get people that, uh, may be interested in something a little different than what's shown on the design plan when they start looking at a, a property. And Habitat tries to incorporate certain features in the property that buyers would like to have, whether it be, maybe it's a bigger deck, or an expanded area or walkout. Some of these changes involve the use of some of the boulders and blasted rock that we get from road construction that has so much ledge. So basically, what we're trying to do, the objective is where we hit so much ledge on the right-hand side of the street here, in looking forward at the, the designs for each of these seven lots, we're going to be moving rock after it's blasted, we're going to be moving rock from one side of the road to the other. Each one of these lots is, uh, very expensive, it, the site construction is, uh, expanded just simply because we have driveways that, some of the driveways are almost 300 feet long, just to negotiate the hills, the difference in elevation. The average length of a driveway for each of these seven lots is about 150 feet, with some of them, like I said, up to 300, and some of them are around 100, 150. So we have, when we have high groundwater and ledge, and we have to get from the road to where the house is going to be built, there's certain parts of that excavation that has to be hardened, just because of the, the, the amount of cuts and fills on the lots. So we're asking basically to have a little difference in what is required when you release lots, the norm, the standard is to have this roadway construction to the extent where you've got binder in place on every stretch of the road that serves these seven lots. What we'd like to do is take that requirement of when the binder has to be in place, and put it just prior to occupancy permit. And what this will allow us to do is to release, have these lots released during this process, except for when you're installing some drainage or something like that, the roadway has to be passable, it has to be a smooth, even grade, not because anybody's living in the house, but just, just to be able to get up there, and for people to come up, and, and that type of thing. So we'd like to take that installation of the binder that is usually required before lot release, and put that binder construction prior to occupancy permit, just for these seven lots, and thereby, we don't ruin the binder and have to replace it. We expect, uh, we expect to have the heaviest pieces of equipment on this section for, uh, during construction. And to have that much equipment and that much weight, including the rock trucks, when we transport rock from one side to the other, we don't want to chew up that binder, and we think there's a high degree of, uh, likelihood that the binder would have to be repaired or even replaced, we don't do this.
No occupancy permit, that's just a building permit.
That's right.
Um, if I may weigh in here, gentlemen, um, I, uh, I was involved with discussing this with Fred, and, uh, you know, due to extraordinary circumstances of this small section of road, you know, I advised him to get a plan done, have Jeff review it, Jeff has signed off on the modifications to the, to the, uh, the site, um...
I, I don't think that's a, I think that's a reasonable...
Yeah, the one requirement stipulation, obviously, our job is to protect the community, um, and this being unorthodox, I mean, generally, we would never allow for a lot release without, without some type of binder down. But due to the, uh, the sensibility of, you know, driving heavy loads of stone across this, you know, maybe four weeks at a time, um, you know, it just isn't reasonable to throw binder down that you were going to end up having to replace. The one thing I have asked the applicant to do through Fred was he needs to provide us with a separate, um, a separate bond for that section of road.
Is the bond done through Jeff?
It will be, if, if we get the waivers, we can ask him to have a request for bond, uh, and a waiver.
So, Bill, how do you want this to go, contingent, contingent to the bond, or how do you want us, this...
Yeah, it needs to be contingent to a bond, it also needs to exemplify the fact that no occupancy permits, Gail, I'm gonna make a request to the, the building department, if you could handle that, that no, no occupancy permits or permitted until, um, that binder's been down and approved by Jeff.
They're not gonna stop.
In that point, we could, um, we could then release the bond.
They're stopped, they're not gonna be looking to frame these houses, they just want to get the construction of the road done.
They, they would be framing, they would be putting the foundations up.
Foundations in, and build, actually building the house?
Actually building the house, yeah, but that's, during that process, that is when...
Well, the foundation, I can understand, but I just don't see what the reasoning behind releasing the lots before that, I mean, I can understand doing that for construction purposes, but, so you can frame and construct the house, stick build the house.
Damon, that's a caveat, I mean, we, for them to put the foundation, you have to release the lot, you can't just have, so...
Well, you don't have to give, you can give a foundation permit, Bill, not a building permit.
Right.
You're gonna have a bunch of houses up there with no, no, no power, no nothing, just gonna frame them and...
Well, they're, they're gonna try to get power, everything up there as quickly as they can, obviously, I mean, you're gonna, uh, I would expect that there would be a couple lots down here near the end of the, the existing binder, that, I mean, they have a couple...
I mean, there's a lot of things we're worried about, and now what happens when you got all these houses built up there, and no access with a fire truck, or a, or a water cistern?
We did, well, we, we do have to keep this open, except when we're installing drainage. We've got to keep this open, even graded, and safe to pass.
Yeah, that was my next question, what is going, going to substitute for the binder, Fred, um, during this process?
Yeah, it's, uh...
I mean, I'd like, I'd like it as close to ready as possible, so if the town had to come in and get involved and take it, then we have as little work to do on those, on that road to that point.
Right, there, there is gonna be, there's gonna be road construction to subgrade, and that is the grade that has to be even graded, smooth, kept open, unless you're doing something right in the road, which, which happens even with binder in.
Well, I know, but you can plow binder, you can, I mean, I just...
Yeah.
I mean, I think that you, you were being more than fair, but, I mean, if Bill already, I just feel that foundation permits would be one thing.
Well, I build it and speak to the board, so if you have...
I don't know what everybody else feels, but framing, framing seven houses, when you have no, with a, a, a road to subgrade in the middle of the winter, seems a little... a, a road to subgrade in the middle of the winter seems a little.
Well, it, it will be to subgrade.
I know, but I'm saying that you're.
No, I, I know what you're saying. It's.
A little extreme, but what do I know?
Well, it, it is what, I mean, you, you can install everything except the binder. You, you will have, you know, the utilities are going to be under the grass strip. They're not going to be under the road surface. So we think we are going to be able to get power up there before the binder. So we're going to, we're going to be able to continue. The, the problem is, these are custom homes. Once in a while they'll build one on spec, but these, these homes are sold and built and graded based on their agreements with homeowners that come in.
So they get, the house sells in November and, and you can't pave it until the spring. You're going to have all these houses sitting up there until April.
Well, April is probably going to be the earliest delivery date. So where, yeah, these are going to be, these are houses that will be delivered next spring.
Sir, you have a question?
Yes, I live on Locust Hill.
Yep.
What number, sir?
Seven. If you want to visit the spring website.
Could you just put your?
They've already sold the two lots after my house on the right, so they sold, I don't know what the next one is, and the one that's not available, and then the two that are across the street are already listed. And they've already started working a lot next to me. So we know the people moving in next to us and they've been told roughly end of March for their house. I don't know how they're going to get in if they can't get a road. They literally waited till the last second to put my driveway in. And I went up with the driveway going like this because it froze before they put the asphalt down. And I'm really concerned that this is just going to push things out further.
Thank you. Hey, Locust Hill. And as far as delivery goes, I signed purchase and sale on my house, or sorry, in spring of 2019, with a delivery date of July 31st, 2019. I moved in December 6th. I, the delays that they have had, and I am not a, a one-off case, they've had continuous construction delays. And that road that they're talking about goes right in front of my house and these heavy trucks are going to keep going back and forth like that. Can we get some kind of timeframe, like a hard date that this might have to happen? Because I, I haven't seen that hit schedule on a single house in that development yet. I was personally.
I understand. You're going to, unfortunately, in a big subdivision, you've got a long way to go, but probably until you'll stop seeing the equipment up and down the road.
No, I, I don't, I don't mind that. We're talking about putting in a gravel road.
Right.
Where you're going to have, now, they're not just working on these lots, they're doing work way up the top and bringing loads of dirt down. It's kicking up dust and debris and everything else. How many we have to do that for instead of getting an actual road? And I fixed my lawn no less than 10 times because they got the looking who's coming in because mine's the last house. So they were going to extend the road, so now they have somewhere else to go. Well, I'd like to get some kind of a timeframe, not just when we sell whatever lot, because who knows? Maybe they move on, well, their development boils to me, they didn't want something else.
Unfortunately, we just, hopefully we can, that can be something that you can address with, with the landowner. But I think that what we're trying to get, I mean, I just, me, I feel that giving a foundation permit so you can get all the construction done as fast as you can, just to let everything go, you know, wide open in there, I think is a little.
Well, they, that, that's true. If we were, if we could do that, that's what we'd do.
Moving the ledge up and down the street, it has nothing to do with framing the houses, right?
No.
No.
Right. It's, it has to do with the transport of blasted rock.
Right.
Hammered rock over and over that same stretch of road.
And I agree with that 100%. I, I guess.
The problem is they, they build a custom home for individuals.
I understand.
So they go through this long process of plan revision. I, I think we, you probably saw.
We all know the process.
Three or four different plans. But yeah, it's, they, they need to, in order to get people, buyers, that are going to be attached to individual lots, the lots.
They already have two lots sold in this particular spot, so they got to get going.
They do.
Right.
They do. I don't know how far the agreements have gotten, but they can't get a building permit without.
Right.
If I may, Jack, Fred, what do we, Fred, what do we look at after timeline?
For timing?
Timeline, yeah, when, when we could have that road prepared.
They want to meet their commitments. The, the earlier, the two that they have, I believe the two that they have tied up are a lot.
Yeah, but I'm, we're providing.
68.
Yeah, we're providing relief for you to, 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 you know, for, for tracking across the road, so you don't have to put a binder down and destroy it. My question, it wouldn't be, I'm not worried about when you guys sell your house because I can't hold the road up for that. My, my concern is, and the way you proposed it to me, was that you didn't want to put binder down and just have to tear it up again, which I totally agree, but I mean, we can't wait for house, you know, for houses to be ready for sale and occupancy to happen, for that road to be completed. I mean, all that work, all that rock work should be done long before that.
Well, it's, yes, and it's, it's, it's getting the involvement of the buyers of the lots. That's the whole deal with this, because this is a custom subdivision and without buyers and, and discussions going back and forth, this is, this is what happens after someone's signs on the dotted line for any particular lot in the subdivision. So that, that's the, the part that we would like to happen.
You're saying they're going to customize a lot itself, depending on how the appearance they want?
Yeah, you may, you may choose to get a, have a three bay garage instead of a two. You may want a, a longer section of walkout and that may generate the need for a boulder wall.
So you're saying every foundation is going to be custom?
Yeah, every foundation, every lot is custom.
Okay, that's fine. When you get your foundation permit, you do your road as fast as you can and then you can sell them accordingly. But I think the road is priority before you try to sell houses. The road has to be in. If you want, if there's help to be done till you guys don't wreck the road, then you allow foundations to be in. You can sell them, but I think to be building houses when you don't have a road accessible 24/7 for fire trucks, to when you've got wood structures up there.
The, the risk would be the, the developers, though. There's nobody living in these houses, they're being built.
Yeah, but the people that are buying them are going to have deposits on them.
It's just, I just feel that it's, we're getting, it's a little, you're pushing the envelope a little bit, I think.
I do agree with the rest of the board. I think that, I think we're being more than generous to, to allow foundation permits. I, I don't have a problem with that, but I also think that, you know, you should have Mr. Wheeler come up with a timeframe for these folks also, so they know what to expect.
Right.
It's a major part of this project and I understand it's the most difficult part of the project. And I, you know, I, I, I think that we're being more than generous to allow foundation permits to go in and, you know, and, you know, possibly we can relook at this and Bill, you'll have to chime in on this one, we can relook at this as, as we get a little closer and if you have maybe that first and second lot sold and under agreement, we can allow a building permit to.
When are you cutting through there, Fred?
They're doing it now. We've staked and graded the road over the last few days and the blaster is going up there and he's probing that stretch of road. And the next step would be to actually, if ledge is encountered on the first stretch, then that's what they'll, you know, they'll have to do some blasting, then excavation, then filling, you know, the usual routine. But we, we are, all the, the lots are built on, on the binder that is down right now. So it's not like this heavy road construction is going to be going by the existing homes on Locust Hill Drive. The destination is the, are the lots that are beyond the end of the binder and that's where the activity is going to take place. I think we have, I think there's a few more lots on that first stretch of Locust Hill that, they need, they, they're going to be spreading, they're going to be spreading loom on the corner lot, Lot 93. And I think there's, there's a couple of frontage lots up the street, but other than that, there's not going to be the need to have the heavy equipment that you've been used to so far going back and forth in front of your house. All the lots have been built.
Why do they think that they're going to have asphalt down?
Well, they, they would, that would, they'd have to have it before they get any occupancy permit issued, which would be next spring, whenever we can, whenever the season opens up.
You have a delivery date of March.
I don't know what the delivery dates are, I just.
You're putting the horse before, I mean, the cat before the horse, but what else?
Well, we are, but, but with reason. We, we have a situation. We have 92 feet of elevation to deal with. We have 300-foot driveways with, with stone riprap that has to be laid down and cut.
Right, so that would, so allowing you to, to build on those lots and any, any, in the, the phase, the excavation phase of construction is a bonus, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, I mean.
Yep.
You can get the septic in, you can get the well in, you can get the. Everything, foundation can be put in place. If you sell a house, the foundation's in. Unless there's something else that we don't know about.
Yeah, they don't, they don't put foundations in before the house, before the lot.
Right, but if you sell a house, you put the foundation because they're custom.
Yep. Mm-hmm. The, the septic's going last. You don't put the septic in first because you've got subs all over the place, you've got trucks and cars coming and going. But.
Okay, can Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah.
What about if we allow the foundation permits and, and maybe issue building permits as, as these houses sell? Is there a possibility of that or is that something that's out of the question? Because I'm not comfortable with the.
Well, we should release, and this is what I was going to make a suggestion, you know, maybe we should walk this along to make sure everything's happening as, as the town entails. You know, we provide the foundation permits and maybe in a month or two, we go back, you know, revisit the site, Fred, contact me, we'll revisit the site, see where we're at with, with it. And then we can, you know, have another discussion before the board at that point. I think you got, at least I assume you've got quite a bit of work to do there before you even start building a stack.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a lot, a lot of site work going on and stuff like that. The road isn't even cut yet, so you're obviously, I'm building houses right now. So why don't we start with the foundation permit? And then, you know, as we, as we move along, we can address the situation. If we feel like the applicant's not meeting his obligation, you know, we, we're not going to proceed, but if he, if he is, he's moving along, you're showing us that, you know, his attention is into this matter, then, you know, we can have a further discussion before the board. Is that something you'd be fine with, Fred?
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I don't have much choice, do I?
You said that, well.
I'm asking, I'm asking for help from the board.
Yeah, right, and that's what, and I think we're.
And I think just this just protects the town, Fred, and will allow, allow you to keep the project moving. I think that's what both of us are looking to do, you know, the board and the applicant are looking to do, I should say. And, you know, and as long as everybody, you know, deals with a clear head, you know, we can make judgments as we move forward, instead of just cop launching this whole thing and then, you know, we end up with a bunch of either angry home buyers or what, you know, what have you, or angry neighbors even. You know, it's the board's responsibility to represent not only the future homeowners, but the, the people who exist there currently.
You have some questions from the audience, can we take those?
Yes, absolutely.
You first.
Hi, Locust Hill. When we purchased our home, we moved in in April and when we purchased last August, or July, rather, the tech had represented that this phase that we're now discussing would be well underway by July this year. And therefore that was reassurance for us that that section of road would be paved, the construction would be moving up, and most importantly, the dust would not be a factor. And so with the way that the street is today and the equipment that does run up and down, there's a good amount of dust that kicks up that causes us to have to wash our children's toys and the house and the windows and the cars. Very frequently the dirt gets inside the house. And so my, my skin in the game would be an effort to move that dust away as fast as possible. And the other part of it is that at some point this spring, a good amount of sand was placed, I believe, for septic or for, around piping at the front of the neighborhood. And the neighborhood is a wind tunnel. We had, we had assumed at that point that that dirt was being placed to be used under construction, perhaps in the road, I'm not sure, but it hasn't been. And so that wind picks up that dirt, brings it around the neighborhood and it washes into, into the drainage that's down there. So my, my interest, the reason why I'm here would be to offer the opinion that I was under the impression that this phase would be well underway by the time, truly after we moved in. And this request only pushes it up farther.
You addressed, I was going to address the sand.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to.
Stay, stay stable.
Oh, sorry. And, and Locust Hill. So when you say that they need to have the road base done by the time, or before they get foundation permits or potentially building permits?
You can get a foundation permit, it'd be the first phase to do while they're, while they're under construction of the roads, they can do, use the ledge that they're, that they're blasting maybe to do the roadway or to build some lots.
But no occupancy permits can be granted for the two houses.
For any house.
For any house. So if they don't have, so before they can close on those two, the road has to be done, even if they don't have the other five completed.
They can do the site plan, the site work on the property, but they can't build them.
What's, what's two, we talked, is he a question about the two at the end or the beginning?
The two, there's two on the right-hand side, they have signed up.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, so now, Bill, if we, listen, okay, those are the two that are closest, that's the beginning of the road, right?
That's the beginning of the stretch.
How far has it paved up that section, like from that thick line?
Right before it, it's very close to this lot line.
Okay, so you could get, you could get that section of road pretty much.
It's, it's passable.
What are the closing dates for those two houses?
That's, one of them's the March, I guess. I don't know what the closing date is.
So if you needed to, you could get that section, even if we release the first two lots on the right, full permit, the other ones were left as foundation, that, that would help a little bit. That would maybe get these guys.
Yep. And that, that's a great idea, Damon.
Bill?
Yeah, no, that, that works. Just keep in mind, Fred, before anything. Yeah, no, that, that works. Just keep in mind, Fred, before anything...
No occupancy.
Before full occupancy, you know, the road has to be done past those houses.
All the road.
Another question, too. These people are living with dust and dirt in the road. I mean, I know everybody else usually has to do, that does construction. They're made, they're made to sweep the road weekly or monthly. I mean, they're, I mean, there's no reason why Mr. Wheeler wouldn't be able to have a sweeper go and sweep in front of these people's houses, right? So they don't have to worry about their kids opening their windows.
And maybe because it's so dry, I mean, I, you know, you know, he can run a water truck up there and wipe down some of it. I mean, this is a... These are, this is drought time and it's, there's dust everywhere. And, you know, I, I don't think it's a lot to ask to keep these folks happy. You know, they've spent a lot of money in that development and...
No, I think he'd be in full agreement with that.
Okay, so if, if, I mean, this, this, this motion is going to be a little bit more trickier than, than most that we do, but before we make the motion, you know, I, I do want to ask you folks, are you comfortable with what we're doing here?
We're going to push to get the road swept weekly or monthly to keep you guys, keep it a little cleaner during, during construction.
And the bottom, and the bottom line is, we're going to get completed probably quicker section of road. I mean, if we weren't to grant these, these foundation permits or allow them to move along, the project would probably progress at, at, you know, because this is probably the, the most difficult stretch of road. And that, that was my concern under the guidance was that it would take them even longer to get that section of road done because they might look past it if, if, if that case may be. If they sell these two first lots, they might only do that and then move on to another part of the project. I want to keep the road moving so they get as far away from your house as you can.
Yeah, state your name in here.
Yeah, Jerry Barrett, hi, Locust Hill. Question about the equipment that they use. There's, there's earth-moving equipment that's on the site now. Is there any difference between what they'll need for the blasting versus what they're already driving over the binder coat up and down?
No, it's, it's the same equipment you've seen, you know, the big rock truck.
Yep. Crushers and hammers.
You got the crushers, the hammers.
The reason why I ask is the binder coat that's there does not have any apparent damage from the equipment they're already driving. So I'm not, I'm trying to understand, how is that different once they blast rock?
Okay, the, the, the major difference is this plan here. And I know it's tough for you guys to see this, but I got a camera over here that we're supposed to pay attention to. When you get up to the end of the straightaway that goes across your property and you get to that bend that goes left and the ground rises up on the right-hand side, that, that is all rock and you can see it. You've probably been up there. You can see it. So part, the third waiver that we're asking for is to allow us to not have to blast that rock to a three-to-one slope. But we're going to be leaving it, we're going to be cleaning the rock off. It doesn't make much sense to blast a three-to-one slope only to put loom on it and seed. The grass wouldn't grow anyway just because there's no depth of soil underneath. So when you have these areas of ledge, you go through a, you pick it apart with the machinery. There'll be pots of it blasted, but the idea is to come up with a surface that is going to be clean. The fragments of rock will be cleaned off the ledge. And it'll be really pretty nice when it's done, very natural and safe. So stable. So that process, this is the heaviest of all, of all the ledge blasting and rock moving. It's, you guys had quite a bit of it, but this is going to be very intense. There's going to be a lot of equipment up there right in this area. It'll be the same equipment, but the trips in front of your house are not going to be like it was before.
So is it, is it a matter of frequency that's going to damage the riprap?
Yep. The frequency and moving of the rocks, I mean, they, this is right between all the lots that are going to be built. So some of it, they'll be able to just move right across the road with a bulldozer. They won't even have to put in a truck, some of it. But if they're going to process it, then it has to go to the...
Or they're going to crush it.
Some of it's going to be crushed, but not all of it. They want to use the large angular blasted stone for walls and riprap on the driveways. So it's, that's what we're trying to avoid, going back and forth from where this rock is processed and going back and forth to the lots over the binder. We were hoping not to have to do that.
Can I ask you a question? You said that the ledge that remains will be really good-looking. To get an idea, is this, would it look similar to what I see like along 495 where that's blasted? Or would it look more like the ledge that's in front of my house that's exposed in the front where it's more chunky?
We're hoping to, there's a sweet spot in there of one and a half feet to one, one foot vertical, one and a half foot horizontal. So it's slightly less than a 45-degree angle so that it's not too steep. That's the goal. But where we have craggy knobs of solid ledge, if it's over four feet, then you have to put a fence above it. This is all going to be in the direction of your engineer.
Yeah, I mean, the blasting is, though, I mean, unfortunately, you cannot dictate to how the rock's going to split and there, but, you know, sometimes it comes out. I mean, you know, nice and sometime it comes out jagged. You know, most of the time it's jagged, but I think that we're going to do our best to keep an eye on things now, knowing that you have some people that are...
And also, we, we want to make sure that you guys understand that, that even after we make our motion here, it does not stop your line of communication. You can always call Gail and let us know what your feelings are, what's going on. But, but just understand that we can't hold up this project. I mean, Mr. Wheeler is, is at his finish of this project. I think that you'll all be very happy that the way he builds his houses and the way he does his, his site work there. I, I do believe that he's done a very good job there. And once it's finished, I think that you'll, you'll all be very pleased that your property values will be high because of the way that he does take the time to create these, these lots in a, in an area that's really very difficult. The ledge there is tough. We're, we're not going to allow the building permits to go on most of these lots. We're going to limit how we do this, but we are going to allow Mr. Wheeler to go further than, than where he's at right at this moment. But again, feel free to, to reach out if there's any issues. We're going to make sure that he waters down that area when it's needed, sweep it as, sweep it as needed and, and move forward with that. All right? Question?
Dan Berger, set on Locust Hill. One of the concerns, I was reading the online thing we got before we came here. It said something about where they're doing this blasting in the slope and you have to put a fence up. They're requesting to be able to put chain link fence. And Mr. Wheeler introduced a set of covenants to the neighborhood that's been very burdensome to some of us. And he fixed it. This is what he's going to, you know, pick on about it. And one of the things they put on it is a chain link fence. And chain link fence, he doesn't allow people to have chain link fences anywhere visible from the front of the houses. So I don't think he should be putting chain link fences on the top of a wall or a ledge that people are going to drive up the neighborhood and see if he doesn't want them on the fronts of our houses.
So what's the, what's the chain link fence doing?
This would be a, this was, we do have some chain link fence, only for safety reasons. When we have a head wall or we have a crossing over a wetland and we have a drop from the road grid down to the wetland.
That's part of the rules and regulations.
Chain link fence there. It's black, it's vinyl plaid, and it's four feet tall.
Right, but they don't, they don't allow us to use that. We have to go buy very nice fancy aluminum.
Well, that's, that's part of the town bylaw. I mean, it's, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the locations would be chosen by Jeff, by the way. Jeff is Jeff Walsh, the engineering consultant for the planning board. This is all going to be inspected by him. And the locations for any chain link fence, we're hoping not to have any. But if some is needed, if we have a vertical elevation that's almost vertical of four feet or more, then you have to put a chain link fence on the top of it so somebody doesn't come walking out of the woods and just walk out.
I understand the safety aspect of it, but if he's going to go by his own bylaws and he's pressing on the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, they're not his bylaws. They're the town bylaws.
No, no, I mean, the, the covenant, sorry.
The covenant, yeah, that's, which is, I mean, this is, most of the time, you're going to see this stuff up on the top of the hill, probably not going to see it unless you're looking for it or, you know, on a, on a crossing that's over four feet high so your children don't fall into the, into the crossing.
Yeah, keep in mind, the covenant is...
Correct.
And develop, the men in rules, subdivision rules and regulations are his obligations to be met for the town, for him to build that site. So if, if he doesn't allow, you know, chain link fence across the front or wherever, you know, that's something that's between you and the developer. The town has no, there's no authority to impose that. So all we can do is impose the rules and regulations and, and, you know, if the board warrants or Caesar warrants, we can provide some relief from that. But we can't make anything more strict than our bylaws.
Well, I think the board has decided that we kind of come to an agreement as long as you're, as long as you're ready. And we'll, we'll try to, like I said, we'll try to do the best we can. If you have any complaints of construction that's going on that's causing a problem or a safety issue for you guys or your families, please call the building department right away. And, you know, even if it's a foolish question or just make the call and then we can just, we can talk with Fred about it and try to get it taken care of before it becomes, you know, makes you or your wives upset or danger to your children. That's, that's the most important thing. But we still, like Jim said, we have to let these guys move forward.
I don't want to lose sight of the fact.
So you guys don't have to look at it anymore.
Yeah. Before we move forward, I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that this, this, this whole meeting is more towards the modification to the plan, which I, I'd just like to advise that our consulting engineer approved of. But when we read it into the record, we need to recognize and if, if you guys haven't seen the modification, I'm sure Fred has it there.
Bill, I'm going to just ask you, because of the fact that this motion is, is a little bit more difficult than most, if you can make some corrections on my way through this and just make sure we're not forgetting...
Just give me one second because I want to read off the waivers Fred's requesting.
Yep.
And maybe, Fred, you can help me with this. First of all, a relief from, from binder.
Yeah, the, the first waiver has to do with the performance guarantee.
Yeah, I was going to say with performance guarantee.
Yep.
Which is the bond for the community.
You want to do each waiver at once or, I mean, separately or you want to do them all at once?
Yeah, no, we'll do them separately.
All right, so...
Damon, when you were talking about two lots possibly being allowed to have building permits and foundation permits on the rest.
Two that you have signed up, if we get, if we gave you building permits for those houses so you could continue to frame them and then occupancy only if asphalt is beyond those two lots and...
Right.
You know, would, we can say...
So, so then the request would be allowed as long as Jeff's on board with it for lot 67 and 68.
Correct.
Except it wouldn't be build it, full building permits for all the other five.
Correct.
It'd be just foundation.
Until you get, until you got asphalt, you know, if you had asphalt and everything up there.
Asphalt utilities in place.
At least, at least you can get going on those two.
Yep.
You know...
What are those lot numbers, Fred?
67 and 68.
That's, that's the two that he wants the building permits for, Bill. It's, the, the entire thing is from 59 to 68.
And before he gets an occupancy for those two.
There's one issue on that, though. They pulled the permit for Lot 59, is it right, Fred? Wasn't it Lot 59 and I contacted you that it wasn't released yet?
Yes, Lot 59, but there, there is no buyer for Lot 59, I don't believe. The last I knew.
Okay, so does that?
Yep.
Yeah, just nullify that now in, to a building, to a foundation permit, you know.
No occupancy for any of them until the road is done all the way by all the lots.
Yep.
Well, they had a full permit for Lot 59.
Yeah, but you didn't prove it, though.
No.
It didn't get signed and get sent off. They don't, they don't have the permit yet.
Correct.
So you just put that back burner.
Okay.
I'm going to just give them a foundation permit for the lots that Jim's going to read off. But we're going to stop, you want to stop? Let's get this, these waivers. Let's do the first one first.
Okay, and don't do it so fast so I can...
Okay. What I wanted to read is the motion needs to be based on the required performance guarantee. The following waivers will be allowed. And then we'll do them one by one.
Make a motion for Locust Hill Drive. Waiver number one, allowing for foundation permits only for Lot 59, 60, 61, 65, 66, 67, 68. With a performance guarantee. Because I'm going to get, because we're doing foundation permits for all of them and then we're going to go back to the other ones.
So it's foundation only for all of them, right?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Prior to, prior to pavement going down, but sub-road in place. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
All those in favor?
With sub-road in place.
Sub-road, okay.
With road to subgrade, yeah.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansels, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Okay, so that's just for the first waiver?
Correct.
Okay.
Now addressing 67 and 68.
Make a motion to grant Lot 67 and 68 building permits with utilities, performance guaranteed bond on Lot 67 and 68. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansels, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye.
Um, one more thing.
Hold on, Bill.
We're just finishing. We're to do the third one first.
Yep. That's what I was going to say. We need to read into the record.
Yep.
And none of, none of the above lots will be provided with occupancy permit until road is completed.
On all, all the lots.
Binder courses.
Binder courses. No occupancies, any of them, on any lots until completion of the road binder.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any amendment to that motion, Damon?
I think we're good. I think he's got it there.
Okay. All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansels, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye.
All right, so Fred, before anything begins as far as the lots are concerned... as far as the lots are concerned, I, we will need that performance guarantee. So if you give Jeff, if you give Jeff a call, get him up there to evaluate that when you're ready. Then we can get the performance guarantee set. Gail, the building department is not to release those foundation permits until performance guarantee is obtained.
All the lots are just.
All those two. Would you mind sharing a phone number with these folks here and give them a schedule of when they're going to have some sweeping and also maybe some watering down of the road before.
As needed. I mean, the sweeping, I think, and the asphalt in front of their houses, you know, is probably going to be helped tremendously.
So when you guys go out in the hall, if you just.
Yeah, I know. I mean, maybe they can put sprinkler on that, you know, on the windy days and try to get it. I understand. I know, I know exactly what you're talking about. I've seen a pile out there many a times. Maybe you can, these are going to be your biggest fan club right here. So, I mean, maybe if you could talk with them and try to keep them happy, that would be the best thing for all of us.
Okay, so when you guys go out in the hall, just please share, share some phone number information just so you can keep them up to speed, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, could you draw up that modification decision for us with the waivers listed, please?
Could you draw up the modification decision?
Oh, yeah.
With everything we listed there and we stopped them all?
Right, including the third waiver for the sloping, right?
Correct.
Yep.
I can do.
Oh, we didn't vote on the third waiver.
Let's vote on that. I'm sorry.
Well, you said all three.
And the lot release too, we didn't do. We only did one waiver, right?
Yeah, you only did the first one.
What other waivers are you looking for here?
The second one is the same thing, exact same thing, only it's for lot releases.
Well, we're not going to give you a lot releases. So we're only going to give you a lot releases on 67 and 68.
We just did that.
I thought I made a copy. Right here. I know, I made a copy for everybody.
Are we giving you a foundation permits for all the other lots?
Right, but we have to have a lot release for that, right? We can't get a building permit unless we show all the.
Yeah, we have to provide a lot release, Damon.
Lot release would still be.
The lot releases are going to be on all the lots, Bill, correct?
That's correct. Gail, could you make sure that John Erickson is up to speed on, on what we're doing?
Definitely, yep.
Thank you.
So, Bill, we need a motion for this, correct?
Yeah. The lots, yeah.
Okay, so make a motion for Locust Hill Road for lot releases for lot number 59, 60, 61, 65, 66, and 67 and 68.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansels, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye.
Okay.
It's the final waiver request.
For the slopes.
Slope.
Yeah, did that, I have Jeff's report. Did you give Damon a copy of that report, Gail?
I'm sorry.
I got it right here, yeah.
Yeah.
I have it.
I mean, I'm going to read it into the record if. All right, here. I received a letter attached from Fred Lappam, which has risen to a plan I've received on September 30th. The two versions of plan propose a 1H by 10V ledge face with ledges present outside the Locust Hill Drive right of way between stations 1700 and 2075. Where ledges and found to be present. The earth slope is proposed to be graded no steeper than one and a half to one. I have no engineering related issues with this plan nor the waiver requests in the letter from chain engineering survey dated September 24. The plan provides for a five foot wall fall zone at the base of the slope and for the fall zone and the slope to be outside of the right of way. Fall zone will also serve as a swale to capture stormwater runoff or before it reaches the right of way. The driveway was, was graded to direct as much runoff as reasonably possible to the swale rather than to the road. Finally, a fence will be provided at the top of the ledge rock face the height four feet high or higher, as noted on the plan. And that was at the request to Jeff, so.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the waiver for the, for the slope change on Locust Hill Drive right of way where the ledge, well, you already read it, so this.
Yeah, I'll just take it off of you.
Just reference, just reference Jeff Walsh's letter of, from today. What's today's date? Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. John Vansels, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye.
Okay. Thank you.
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Locust Hill.
For the modification.
And modifications.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansels, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye.
All right, they're mad at the rest. What do we got next?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, people.
7:45.
No, 7:30.
7:30.
63 Providence Street.
There's a public hearing for 63 Providence Road. A site plan review, special permit, October 19th, 7:30 PM. In zone by law to construct a 4,800 square foot building in site development for a proposed contractor's yard located at 63 Providence Road Mendenham.
Thank you. So the site is.
Bill, can you hear it? Bob?
Yes.
The site is considered, is called lot 63. It's 3.25 acres of land. It has access, has legal frontage on Providence Street.
Yeah, conditionally planned.
All I have is my post on the website. I go, sorry.
There you go. All right, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, so the proposal is, is to have an access drive off of Providence Street come in to the site. The site currently is a, is heavily wooded. It's predominantly wooded, so we're proposing to come in with an access drive, clear this area here. Build the, the building here with four bays, four garage doors with bays. There'll be a slight office area here with the, with the required parking here. The, in lieu of asphalt pavement, we're proposing reprocessed asphalt for the majority of the site except for a 50 foot apron at the street, which would be right in here. We've got the berm, constructed berm along this property line with, with Albert Vitae's on top to, to soundproof this property here. Some more over here. We've got underground, large underground detention area here attenuating any stormwater runoff from the building, the rooftop and the proposed parking and loading area. Septic system will be here. And there's a wetland that's along this area here. It's, it's mostly runoff exposed to. We have a section probably from the top of this driveway here down, which is, cannot be graded such that it can be attenuated by this, about this system. So we've added another small underground detention here, which has slowed the flow down sufficiently enough that we can tie it into the existing street system in Providence Street. It is in the general business zone. The zone line is, is here, goes here and all the way into Morrison, all the way to Morrison Drive. Pretty much it.
How far is that entrance from Morrison Drive?
On the other side of that little house, John.
On the other side of the red house?
This is, this is a small house.
Between that house and the, the next house.
Okay, yeah.
It's got to be a couple hundred feet.
Oh, yeah, easy.
Yeah, it's easy. It's a.
Okay.
It's like 600 feet, maybe.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, what's the frontage on it?
What's that?
What is the frontage on it?
On the, on the existing plan?
A piece of property.
The present property has 200 feet of frontage. This was, these lots were created by a, went to ZBA. And we, well, our planning board, we cut out the lots and created this lot with 200 feet of frontage. Starts here.
I can remember that.
Goes well over this way here to here.
Yeah.
Has legal frontage, has a, it's the necessary legal frontage.
So this falls, actually within the, I, I can't read it. The map's a little fuzzy. This falls within the, the general business?
Yes, it does. Completely within the general business zone. The, the property line here is, this is one of the, this is one of the property lines here and it's a general business zone against rural residential.
Yeah, okay. All right, so.
We've already looked at this plan last time it was in, so I mean, does anybody have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
No, we just.
No, I, like, so as of this time here, I have not received any comments from Jeff Walsh, so.
No, I understand. I just, I think that we have a. I just wanted, if there's any questions from a, a barter, I'd like to get it addressed to you guys so you can. Good?
65 Providence Street, I just wanted to see where the building is located.
Yeah, okay. You can go up, take a look, yeah.
Building will be right here. 60. This is the house. Yeah, it's this hill climbs up and it's a big, there's a big six foot high burn here with trees planted on top of it. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a stone wall significantly back. It's at least 50 feet from the stone wall. Yes, right to that tree line.
So that's, that's going to be closer, that's going to be closer to the problem.
Yeah.
All right, now, Bob, one.
What's that?
I had asked you to talk to John Erickson about. Is we currently do not have a, a a use, a construction yard use within our use table. So there would need to be some type of relief provided and you would probably need to go before the ZBA for a use change.
Well, no, because it's the same, it's the exact same thing that you guys approved for Brazza on Route 140. It's the same use, it's the same, it's the same business.
But that was in a commercial zone.
That was in the highway zone, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's still, there's still nothing in, in your, your allowable uses, which specifically call out a contractor's yard or, or, you know, a construction business.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure why, you know. I'm going to have to look at the use table and take a look at it. If it was done in era, Bob, it was done in era past 21 day waiver requirement.
Bill, I think Brazza came before the ZBA.
Oh, did he? Okay.
I'm pretty sure he did.
Yeah, because.
I think he did.
Yeah, that was a while ago, but, I mean, normally we shouldn't, you know, we. I mean, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it probably wouldn't be an issue where it's had in the general business district. I just got to take the correct steps here because, Bob, if I, it not only protects the community, it protects you because if, if a decision goes out and someone contests, it obviously creates a problem for your applicant. So, I mean, I'll take a look and I'll speak with John Erickson again about the use. We can address it at the public hearing. I mean, we can, you can still go to the public hearing and we can make contingent upon whatever John Erickson believes, but. See, and, and that's, you know, we need to get to the process of when something's coming before planning, it needs to go to building first. They are zoning enforcement. So they, they need to be in the loop so they can make the judgment of that it's, you know, that you've met all the obligations for the town and that the planning board's ready to arrive at this. So I will speak to John and, you know, if we can, you know, if he's comfortable that it meets one of the use, you know, something in the table uses. I'll, I mean, there's some that are vague, you know, processing materials, whatever. So they, they kind of take on a broad scope of their own, but I'll, you know, once again, that's not my job to make that decision. That's the building department's job, the zoning enforcement officer's job. I get myself in trouble when I overstep my bounds, so I'm going to let them make the call on it. And either he or I will get back to you, Bob. But we can still set the public hearing date and move along.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, this is the public hearing, okay.
Public hearing.
Why, we, we.
If, if, if the site works satisfactory and we don't have any record from Jeff yet, then we're going to have to continue anyway.
Nothing back from Jeff Walsh?
I have not received anything. I think probably what happened was when, when this was originally submitted, it was going to be, the hearing was going to be on the 29th and probably, he was probably notified of that and probably wasn't re-notified that it was changing.
All right, well, let's, if we continue it till the 29th, we'll be able to talk to John Erickson, get that taken care of. And hopefully by then we'll just, we'll follow up with Jeff Walsh tomorrow, probably. And is that okay?
October 29th is a Thursday.
I'm sorry, 26th.
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 Yeah, 26th.
Of this month.
Yes.
October. So we're going to continue it to when?
Yeah, we're going to need to continue it and I, I will, I will address this with John and then we'll let Jeff do his engineering. And that way hopefully we can, you know, better hit the reveal. I think, I think there is a, I think there may be use in there that fits, but I'll let John make that call.
No, the 26th is next Monday.
I can remember.
I forget.
I'm on what, I forget, but I think he did.
A contractor's yard versus a storage facility?
You could, you could say it's storing equipment. It's a storing equipment for his, for his business.
Yeah, I just, I think, I think we need to, you know, as long as John's comfortable with it, there's a couple that I was, I was looking at. And, you know, unfortunately, we wrote the, we wrote the table uses. We didn't incorporate every circumstance men already had in the community. Should have been more thorough. But some of those items now. I think, well, there's some that were, that were kind of vague and required more depth and I, it's a good possibility that that fits within one of those uses, so.
You're not going to have a mining operation going on here, but you're just going to have a place where you're going to store your, yeah, you're going to store your pickup trucks.
So, Bill, you might want to look at the site plan that we got approved for Harrington Street. Remember we had those 11 individual.
Yeah.
Buildings?
Okay.
And that could approve too, so. That was similar.
That went through the zoning too. That did. I can remember that meeting.
Hey, Bill?
Yes.
The 26th is next Monday. We're having two meetings in two weeks in a row?
The next scheduled meeting, Bill, is 11...
No, November 9th.
Oh, November 9th.
Can it wait till November 9th, gentlemen, or... I just don't want to say that we're gonna have the next mining...
As long as, as long as I can get some information from Jeff Walsh and I can make any connection and go back and forth with him and know that the plan is completed on November 9th, then, you know, it's gonna get approved on that night.
Yeah, I think we can... Well, I want to use the term broadly of approval, and we'll approve the planning if there's still requirements for the ZBA. You may have to, you know...
You know, to the ZBA.
When is the next ZBA meeting?
They come up as the applications come in.
Well, we might not have to go to the ZBA if John Erickson wants...
Correct.
Correct.
Ask John Erickson and he'd...
Yeah, we can subject our approval to that, Bob, so we don't have to hold you up.
Well, the thing is, if there's a change on the plan...
You'll have to modify.
Contingent to the plans being amended, it's up to the chairman.
Well, basically, I mean, you know, in the zoning bylaws states that they will need in any and all requirements of all boards. So if there's a requirement that they need to go to ZBA, before they can build the building, they would need to go to ZBA, and that would be the building departments. And that's why I'm saying, let's get the horse in front of the cart and deal with John Erickson now, then you submit for a building permit based on our approval, and John Erickson says, "Well, that's not a use." So let's, let's talk to John first. If it requires going to ZBA, we can make our decision contingent on ZBA approval. And if there are modifications to the plan that needs to be done at that point, Bob, you'll have to modify the plan.
Okay.
So ZBA approval and also code enforcement officer approval?
Would we have to go if John Erickson...
There's something... that's automatic. That's automatic. It would just be contingent on ZBA if John Erickson requires.
But what you'll still have to do is we still have to get approval from Jeff Walsh, the towns engineer, to make sure that he agrees with everything that Bob did.
No question.
Guys, I apologize, I got an echo going on here. I'm trying to follow along as best I can, but...
Are you okay with an approval contingent to building department?
Well, we can't approve anything yet. Jeff has to do his report.
Oh, that's correct.
Sorry, skip back.
I would be, so I would be happy with that rule.
Yeah. Let's, well, let's continue it to the November 9th. You get, Bob, you speak to Jeff Walsh. Make sure Jeff Walsh is fine with that plan. I'll get to John Erickson. We'll discuss it with John, and then we'll move forward on the 9th.
Sweet. Okay. Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 63 Providence Street to November 9th.
7:30.
7:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansluis, aye.
Lambrizino, aye.
Damon Tenny, aye. Thank you. Now, Bob, there was no... I thought there was some talk that there may have been some... The prior owner went to zoning, that isn't true?
I think that was, that was an effort to make sure that the area was in a jungle.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's why I figured, well, swap, the John's standing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
So do you have your zoning approval, Michael?
Yeah.
Can we have that? Can you forward that to Gail?
Or just get it to Bob or something so they can put it in with the records?
This recorded, yeah.
John Erickson else, okay, yeah, there you go.
Can you have that for November 9th? That'll make things a lot easier for us if you have that for November 9th.
All right. What do we have next?
Hot Place.
Bob Boxen.
Bob Boxen.
This is a submittal for 103 Oxford Road Marijuana Dispensary.
Right there. But it's heavy.
This is a middle bill, so we're good to go.
We know it's on, probably.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, I don't have to take anything else out. I'm good, Scott.
Hey, Scott, would you just sign the form out there? Okay, great. Okay.
Have you recognized him?
So you sign it, call your name right.
To recognize him.
I don't think we need, this is a submittal.
It's only a submittal, we don't need it.
Meeting here, see it. I got... All right, five, Bob, thank you. Hit, Bob.
Hey, Gail, instead of, instead of cutting down trees every time, why don't you take... Oh, you know what? No, Bob, Bob might end up having changes after speaking to Jeff, so...
Damon.
Do you have a, do you have a plan to put up there, Bob?
Or what? The fireplace?
Yeah, whatever.
No, I didn't, I didn't have one to put up. I just brought, because it's not, I'm not working on it. I'm just here because I'm here. The Franklin Office is doing the plans.
Yeah, do you guys have any questions?
Well, I made, I made reduced copies for the board to hang out so they'd have something to look at, but I didn't really do it. I didn't really prepare anything that was in front of anyone.
Yeah, I'd just like to give the board an opportunity to look at it.
You have four men's?
Dan, do you have any...
Yeah.
Little copies of that?
I only see one, four men here, Bob. We've been at...
No, I don't have it.
That one was the whole size.
That's all right. We can address it at the meeting.
Bob, you don't have a second one?
No, there's only 11 by 17.
Okay. Yeah, well, here, yeah.
Is it in here?
Okay, I was looking to see. I didn't see it on... Yeah. Because I know we need two. Okay, here it is.
Can I just still, now, Bob, do you have an extra one?
Well, make sure. All right.
He's not doing this, he's not finding this. He's just dropping it off and he's here. Yeah, the Franklin Office is... Someone from the Franklin Office will make a presentation and then take care of this Mike Hassett problem.
Cahills.
But I know a little bit about it, but not as much attention. So basically, it's the first house after Hideaway Pizza on the same side of the street.
David House. Used to be.
You hear me, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the first house after Hideaway Pizza on the same side of the street. That's the property that this is gonna go in on.
It's the Jeff one?
Pretty much right across from Jimmy's vacant lot there that he blasted all the...
Yeah, the old Wilson residence?
Yes, yes. So they're gonna build a, they're gonna build a, I think it's a 4,000-square-foot building. If it's even that much, I'm not sure. And just with, with a drive... They want to have a drive-through and single, single-lane access, single access point off of Route 16. Some underground detention, you know, a little bit of pavement.
We had to go in. You got a variance for that.
All right.
Okay, so he's only submitting, so all we need is a motion.
Yep.
This is, we have the variance.
Need a motion to set a public hearing for 103 Oxford Road. It would be November 9th. It would probably have to be 7:45 because we have two others before that.
Yeah, well, I wasn't sure that they got it.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for 103 Oxford Road Marijuana Dispensary for November 9th at 7:45.
7:45.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansluis, aye. Damon Tenny, aye.
Lambrizino, aye. All right.
We're all set.
Is that everything?
Oh, I got...
No, Gail, you missed something.
They have an R plan for Hartford Ave East. There are, there's two lots that were approved by the zoning board of Hills.
Oh, good thing I took the stamps because I didn't know it was being done.
It's not getting here.
I know.
So I'm just trying to get the monolith signed.
Already approved?
Yes, it's already been approved by the ZBA. It is a decision.
Already approved by zoning.
By zoning board.
Oh, okay.
It's reduced frontage. The lots have reduced frontage and a...
Okay, yeah.
They're gonna allow access.
So I need Jim.
Okay, so Bill...
I thought we'd tell somebody on Hartford Ave.
What's that?
But I can't...
Tell somebody.
Right.
On Hartford Ave?
Yeah, which lot?
There are a lot, they call it, it's lots 44A and 44B. It was lot 44, it was a big lot, over six acres, but it didn't have enough frontage for two lots, so... And it's got the gas, he's been running through it, the pond in the front of one of the lots.
It's Cahills.
What's that? Yes, Cahills, yes, yes, Cahills.
He's done, I almost watched that.
So we went to ZBA and we got reduced frontage. We got two lots with 103...
I didn't change the date.
A common drive access, so there's only one road coming out onto the, onto Hartford Ave in the proximity of the intersection of Hartford Ave and Bellingham Street. So we just, we just need to get the A and R signed.
So, Bill, you'll have to come in tomorrow and sign, please.
Okay.
Whenever you're back in town.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be back till Wednesday, but you can wait for me tomorrow, Gail.
Okay, I will. I know, I'll be waiting all day, right?
Oh, shoot. All right.
All right, are we closing the pub, the meeting?
Make a motion to close the...
I mean, if Bob's gonna take those now, I mean, three signatures will be enough. It's an A and R plan.
Damon can't.
It's okay, it's okay. I can't sign them.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so you could just, when you come in, that's fine. As long as there, you can, when Gil, when you sign them, Gil will call me and I'll pick them up. But I have to accuse myself from these.
Right. So I think we're all set so we can close the meeting?
I'll roll this up and fill it away with the plans.
Yeah, okay. All right.
You got, so you know, you got your two formates.
Good, okay.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Oh, are they both signed?
Yep.
Are three signed, two signed?
I have most. Hey, guys, I like you, but I'm on vacation.
No, they're not signed.
By me.
Yeah, the planning board has to sign.
Yeah, I know, I just...
Okay, yeah.
I just think I signed it.
Guys, I'm...
I second it.
John, you have to sign the formates, you and James, and then Bill will sign when he comes in.
Gail, you're interrupting him.
Who, me?
All right, Bill. Gil, aye.
I'm there.
I need a motion, I need a motion to adjourn so I can get back to vacation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, could I have the last, please?
Rest of the stuff, the formates on.
Can I have a second?
Yeah.
Whoever.
I seconded.
I seconded.
John seconded.
All those in favor?
Damon Tenny, aye. John Vansluis, aye.
Oh, my gosh.
Lambrizino, aye.
The decision, so you got that for the final round.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Guys, have a good time. I'll see you in a couple days.
Listen up, will you? Have fun, Bill.
Bye, Bill.
Don't have too many drinks.
Jimmy, I won't be there Tuesday night.
Actually, I need someone's help to take...